Mr. Kismarski.
Here.
Ms. Konika.
Here.
Dr. Morthe. Mr. Winjirkwitz.
Yes.
Ms. Sukon.
Here.
Mr. De Silva.
Here.
Mr. Gallo.
Here.
Ms. Barrett.
Adequate notice of agenda this meeting has been provided to the Ridgewood News and the Record specifying that the Mawa Board of Education will meet on February 13th, 2019 in the administrative offices, 60 Ridge Road, Mawa, New Jersey. A copy was filed with the township clerk. Mr. Winjirkwitz, would you please do this, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, so we start at 5:45 so that we can do our interviews for to fill our Board of Education vacancy. So I am going to turn this over to Mr. Bleeker, who's going to run that process for us.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Good evening. Welcome. For tonight's evening, as Mr. De Silva said, we're going to be doing interviews to fill a vacancy that currently is on the Board of Education. The Board has developed a set of eight questions that each candidate will be asked, but the Board reserves the right to ask follow-up questions if needed. After the last interview, the Board will recess into executive session to deliberate. Following executive session, a vote will be held in public. If a candidate receives five or more affirmative votes, they will be sworn in and take a seat from the dais. We have allowed 15 minutes for each candidate. We're going to be getting the interviews shortly. We're going to conduct the interviews in alphabetical order. The candidates here that are interviewing are Ms. Eva Astorita. Eva Astorita, apologize. Mr. Brett Copeland, Mr. Peter Di Pasquale, Mr. John Denise, Ms. Patricia Dubois, and Mr. Jonathan Lancaster. We are going to conduct the interviews in alphabetical order. So, Ms. Astorita, you'll go first. For the other candidates, I'm going to ask you to go to the small conference room. We'll have you there, and we'll come get you when you turn. Mr. Brett. Sheriff, just show them where it comes from. Thank you.
So, um, so each of us get to ask questions?
Dr. Morthe. Oh, Ms. Barrett.
Thank you for joining us, Ms. Barrett.
Oh, I beat her this time.
So we're just, we're just getting started with our first candidate. So the first question, what prompted you to submit your application to become a member of the Board of Education? And is there anything in particular that interests you about this position?
I'm a Mawa mom. I, I have two daughters. One isn't, they are, one's 14 and is going to go into public school, hopefully Mawa High School. And I have a younger daughter who's 10 years old. Both of them who went to Betsy Ross, they started education there. Um, so I'm very passionate about education. My profession is, I'm a principal in New York City. I've been a principal for eight years. Um, I am a con fellow from Teachers College. That means I was one of the folks that was chosen to represent principals in New York City to train other principals, um, to become highly effective models for it. And currently, for the past two years, I have been a model principal training other schools and leaders in effective learning as well. So, obviously, I am, that's my field, that's my passion. So there's two parts of it. One, I'm a mom, Mawa. I've been living here for the past 14 years. And, and I'm an educator. I've been in education for 22 years, so it's been a long time. My experience is education, it's special education specifically. I have a background in, I'm also a substance abuse counselor and a clinician as well. So I have a very wide range of, of experience. My education background, I have a master's in education and advanced degrees in leadership as well.
What do you see as the duties and responsibilities of a Board of Education member?
Um, it's to care the community, their concerns, their perspective. It's also for me personally, I like to look at global aspects of education. I'm really research-based learner and educator. I look at trends in education, and hopefully that part of it could be an asset supportive education. So I look at it as contributing my knowledge base as well as really infusing my background in global thinking and application of educational research on a, on a much bigger scale. Obviously, this is Mawa, but it's, it's a big time. And I think with so many trendy things, as far as digital technology, incorporating STEM, incorporating, um, social-emotional learning, and emotional intelligence, all those aspects are a big part of education, including, um, just cultural diversity and things like that. Those are my interests, and I definitely, hopefully, will be able to provide that as an asset, as being part of the team at Board of Education.
What personal or professional attributes would you bring to the Board of Education, and how do you see it enhancing our operation?
Um, I'm a very good listener. I think as a, as a leader, you learn to really listen and the constituents, parents, educators. And my big thing, I think this year, which was very tremendous, is student voice. I believe that students are the leaders of the future, and they should be really part of decision-making. So I, I think that's something I would infuse as well, is having student voice be part of it in a bigger way.
Thank you.
Is there anything in particular that you would like to accomplish while in the service of this district?
Um, I kind of mentioned it before, I'm a very big believer in, in getting education. The education is changing so much tremendously, and I think a lot of the things I would probably want to do is meet up with a lot of businesses and really focus on development. And I know Mawa has different career paths as far as in high school, and there's different tribes that need to go. But really analyzing, comparing the employment trends and the needs of the employers in the future, meeting with, with different constituents, not only Mawa, but as a larger thing, and to see how it affects the future for our students. Because it's speeding up much quicker with AI and AR, our, you know, augmented technology, it's, the world is speeding much quicker than. Like, every day I get up and I'm like, oh, there's a new thing I have to talk to my, my staff about. And then, you know, I'm like trying to infuse as much as I can, and everything is, every day is something different. And I feel like the urgency is there for our future generation to be more equipped with that. And some of it, some of it is just training yourselves. You know, you, I remember when I had, I brought iPads into my school, and it was about 10 years ago, when they first came out. And within like two weeks, all the kids figure out how to like, they change the passwords, you know, and we were like upgrading it, uploading, restoring it. So I think there's like, the students have the answers in them. They have the access to all the technology. So, education system, to me, is really infusing our expertise, expertise and nurturing them and really focusing on whole child approach and making sure that when they leave Mawa, that they're not only great in education, but as global citizens, right? That they become, they can look at fake news and identify if it's fake or not, that they know where to go for secondary, you know, information, and they're able to access that. So I think that's, I think that would be kind of my focus as well.
Thank you. Tell us a bit about your past or current involvement with any professional, community, school, and/or civic organizations. What roles have you taken within those organizations? And how do you feel your involvement has prepared you for service on the Board of Education?
Um, most recent one, I guess, is being the model principal. Um, I work, collaborate with, you know, in education, obviously, and in my district. I'm very fortunate and blessed to be part of District 75 in New York City, who is the biggest, the biggest district serving students with disabilities. We have 25,000 students with disabilities. My school is part of it. I have students from 10 to 21 years old. But the, being part of them, the learning partners, and I collaborate with, you know, co-part of my peers, also principals in their, in their teams, and really, we're really focusing on research-based analysis of how to infuse effective instruction specifically in transition planning. And how do you get students from, you know, specifically for us, students with severe disabilities, to exit in the world, which is very competitive? And giving them the edge to perform as, to their optimal potential. So, what, you know, I continue to grow as a leader, and as a mom too, because that's, you know, managing everything as well. But as a leader, I learn every day that it's very unpredictable, but at the same time, you have to have focus and passion and vision of, clear vision and vision of what you're doing. And my vision is clear, is to create, to help, to, to really empower youth to be global citizens and to take whatever knowledge they have and make the world better. And that, make better choices for themselves. So the, the focus of that group is, to me, to discuss, to learn from each other, we all are there, to, you know, to learn different skill sets, different ideas, different research-based analysis, looking at our work, accepting feedback, and really striving to enhance all the students' instruction in our, in our district.
Ms. Astorita, thank you for coming out. I'm Prema Morthe. At this time, do you see, I have a two-part question.
Sure.
At this time, do you see any limitations or conflicts of interest that might hamper you in fulfilling your responsibilities as a board member?
Um, no, not at this time.
Okay. Our meetings are held every two weeks, with meetings once a month during the summer. A trustee can be removed from the board if they are absent for more than a consecutive three meetings. Members are not only required to devote time to public meetings, but also to volunteer their time by joining committees that might be of interest to them. Sounds like you're quite busy and have a very full life, which is wonderful, but will you have sufficient time to devote to this position?
Um, I'm dedicated to public service. I, I'm passionate about just education itself. Whatever, um, knowledge I have, experience I have, I, you know, I hope to share it with the board as well as with the school community. I, you know, I offer myself to it, and I know there's a time commitment. And my, my daughter said, mommy, you sure? You're like, it's a lot. And I'm like, you know, yeah, you know?
Uh-oh.
Because she sees how much you work. And, you know, I also want to be a role model. And I feel like, uh, you know, I'm a mom, but I'm a working mom. And there's one thing I don't do, is cook, right? But everything else I'm really good at.
I don't.
Insta, Instacart is great, you know, that delivers my food, I'm supporting Academy, it's all good. There are certain things that I manage to do to multitask, and I take technology, which is like Instacart and all those different things, to kind of figure out a way where I can be a mom.
And a wife.
You know, and, and a leader. And I think that's, I think being a role model is really important for my daughters. And I said that to them before I left. And then they go, mommy, good luck. And I said, you know, I, I'm doing this for you, because I want you to see that, you know, you have to be active in your community, that you have to be contributing in some sense. So I, I do want to do it in a structure, and I want to do it here. You know, I look at different committees, you know, throughout the thing, you know, but I feel like this is a perfect fit for me, because that's where my expertise lies, and hopefully, I can, I can be part of it.
Great, thank you.
Please tell us something about the Mawa School District that you're most proud of and why. And I have to apologize, I mistook you for someone else that walked in. You said hello to me, I said hi, and I mentioned an email. I was seeing you entirely different person.
It's fine, I think it's fine.
We have never talked to each other.
I think the, the education of my daughters started, started when, when they began Betsy Ross. The, the social-emotional development for them, what makes me really proud, like when you go to Betsy Ross and you feel, when you walk in, the teachers and the community and the leadership was very inspiring. And the whole sense of like, welcoming of parents, the, the different fundraisers, and just involvement with so many people to make the school great was very inspiring to me. So, I think just the whole idea of sense of community, local education, and really just watching my daughters when they were, you know, from first grade, relearning, those are the basic years, by the way, when you're like, the impact of, of, there's a research recently done that the kindergarten teacher should be making $350,000 a year, because the impact though is not going to be seen to 35, it has a great economic value, meaning when they do analysis of, of income of, of kids that have really strong kindergarten teachers, when they're 35, that's when you see the real impact. It's nothing in between. So I thought it was interesting. So the idea of being first, second, and third grade is really, I think, key for, to student development. And I think they have, they're really grounded because of it. They're kind, and they're sweet, and of course, the academic part is, is important too, but I think at the end of the day, we want to make sure our kids are safe and that they're good people, right? So, that's it.
So true, excuse me, it's all true, but the chairman of our negotiating team had a heart attack. You mentioned that.
It's just an estimate.
And then Kyle had a heart attack.
Perhaps the guy could have suggested.
That was NPR for it.
Thank you very much for coming. I just wanted to know if you have any specific questions for us, and if there's any further information that you'd like at this time?
No, I think, you know, I mean, I love Mawa, I love the, the community, the people I, I have met for the last 14 years I have been, you know, here. Again, I'm very blessed to be here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Yeah, if you would mind, Mr. Copeland to.
Evan, you're welcome to stay in here. You don't have to go back to the.
You don't have to go back.
Thanks for putting the packages together, we already did it.
I would love to take credit if it wasn't that. It was Kyle and Sheriff. So they had everything in front of them.
More people should be around. Mr. Copeland, thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
We each have a, identical questions for all of our candidates, so I'm going to go back and kick off. What prompted you to submit your application to become a member of the Board of Education? And is there anything in particular that interests you about this position?
Sure. First of all, thank you for allowing me to interview tonight. I think from what I've seen, having six people throw their names out, that's, that's pretty impressive, I think, for an open spot in Board of Ed. What's prompted me, it's a natural progression for me, from my involvement in town. From the time my daughter started kindergarten, she's in sixth grade now, I've been involved in the HSO. I actually got pulled in the summer before she started to work on the Walkathon. And my first comment at the first meeting was, what's a Walkathon? Had, had no idea what it was, had no idea what I was getting myself into. And this coming October will be my eighth consecutive Walkathon, managing that, that whole, that whole event. So I got hooked pretty, pretty quick. When I look at the Board of Ed, it's been a personal goal for me to, to get involved a little bit more on the educational side of, for my kids, but also for the kids in town. My involvement in town has always been focused on the youth, whether it's on the HSO or the, the Youth Sports Boosters, which I'm currently the president of. I've always tried to get involved in organizations that can enhance what the kids are doing in town, or make things better for them. That was, that's basically the catalyst for me to get involved now. It's, it's the right time for me. Over the past several years, I've looked, I have considered running, but every time I've considered something that's come up personally or professionally where it just wasn't right. And over the last couple months, I've been talking to my wife, my kids, my family, and it, we, we just feel like this is a great opportunity for me to, to kind of accomplish what I want to do here. What was the second part of the question?
Was there anything in particular that interests you about the position?
Sure. Being involved in Board of Ed, that, that's basically what it is. It is, is helping guide the district, you know, to be better than what it is today or yesterday. I, I think that's what the, the purpose of being on the board is for, for everyone. It's trying to make the district better than it was when we started. Thank you.
What do you see as the duties and responsibilities of a Board of Education member?
So, I can sum it up pretty quickly. The Board of Ed, it's, it's here not to run the district, but to make sure the district is run well. I, I view the, I view the board as being the, the board of directors of a large company, making sure and overseeing what's happening in the district, not running the day-to-day, not being involved in student issues, not worrying about if a, if a teacher gave out a homework on a Tuesday afternoon. That's not, that's not what the role of the Board is. We're here to, to guide the management of the district, not necessarily to oversee the day-to-day operations. That's why we have the, the staff and the professionals in place.
What personal or professional attributes would you bring to the Board of Education, and how do you see it enhancing our operation?
Sure. I think my personal and professional attributes kind of, kind of go hand-in-hand. I'm currently a partner in a marketing firm, Ramsey. It's a family-run business, I've been involved in it for 20 years. And from that, I've learned a lot of management skills. I've learned, my organizational skills have, have jumped greatly since my father-in-law has had to retire, or he thinks he has retired, but says he, yeah.
A hanger-on.
Yeah, basically. Also, from my involvement in the community. I think I have a unique perspective in how schools are operated, what schools need. My involvement with the HSO obviously gives me a unique perspective of, of how schools are operating at a local level. I'm seeing the needs of teachers, also of the students. I've, I have a great relationship with the administrators in the different schools that I've been involved in, and I, I'm seeing what they need. So I think from that angle, I'm seeing different things that maybe other people may not see.
Is there anything in particular that you would like to accomplish while in service of the district?
That's a great question, because I could probably list off a whole list of things that I'd love to see myself get involved in if I, you know, if I'm selected tonight. But I think overall, it's just a matter of, of just guiding the district and making sure the district is keeping up with the ever-changing world around us. You know, thank you for voting on the, the new tech program, the one-on-one in the high school. I think that'll take us to the next step on that end. But around us, things are changing, and I, I'd like to be involved in that. I'd like to, you know, not sit on the sideline and watch. I want to be in the game and, and be part of that, that decision-making, and how we move the district forward, knowing that we have, we have challenges coming up. You know, whether it's affordable housing, you know, development, how are we going, how does the district respond to that? What's the technology going to look like in, in three, four, or five years? Obviously, technology changes on a regular basis. You know, at one point, everyone wanted iPads, you know, in the schools, and that was the fad back then. But they're probably regrading that decision now, and going more towards laptops like we, like we just approved. So, on that angle, I think it's just a matter of just guiding the district. And, and I don't have any pet projects. I'm not coming in here with an agenda. I'm not saying, hey, I'm going to hit this or that. That's not the, that's not the way I'm looking at this.
Thank you. Tell us a bit about your past or current involvement with any professional, community, school, and/or civic organizations. What roles have you taken within those organizations? And how do you feel your involvement has prepared you for service on the Board of Education?
So, as I mentioned, I am currently the president of the Mawa Youth Sports Boosters. I'm also the commissioner for soccer. I'm also the president of the George Washington HSO, and I'm on the mayor's digital advisory committee, which I was just asked to be involved in the end of last year. I mentioned already on the HSO end, I'm seeing, you know, as president of the HSO, I see the schools in a little different way. But also, when I'm dealing with the youth sports, I've had the, the privilege to work with Mr. Bleeker and some of the central office staff members. So I, I was able to see that angle, that end of things, of how the schools and districts are run on that side of things. So I, I think I bring a different and unique perspective when it, when it comes to how schools are run, how the districts are run.
What did you see you do for the town?
I'm on the mayor's digital advisory committee. It's a, it's a committee that the mayor set up the end of last year to review the township website and the township's social media policies. And if you've ever been on the township website, you will probably agree that it needs a tremendous overhaul. And the committee is basically just advising the mayor as to which direction we may want to go in. We're not, we're not making any decisions, or we have no authority to, to do anything. It's just, just, you know, reviewing and advising.
Mr. Copeland, Brett Aria, I'm Prema Morthe. So, I have a two-part question. At this time, do you see any limitations or conflicts of interest that might hamper you in fulfilling your responsibilities as a board member?
No.
Our meetings are held basically every two weeks. We have meetings once a month during the summer. A trustee can be removed from the board if they are absent from three consecutive meetings. Members are not only required to devote time to public meetings, but also to volunteer on committees and join committees. You're a busy man, which is wonderful, and you're very community-oriented. But will you have sufficient time to devote to this position?
Yes. That was one of the major things that my wife and I spoke about. And yes, I, I feel that I'll have the time to put into what I need to put into for the BOE. I did fail to mention, Ms. Sukon, that I am a member of the Township Rec Committee as well. If I, if I am selected tonight and appointed, I will resign from that, just because there's too many conflicts of, of meetings. They meet on Wednesdays, and looking at the different, the two schedules, there are just too many conflicts. So I will be resigning from that if I am, if I'm appointed tonight.
Thank you.
Brett, please tell us something about the Mawa School District that you're most proud of and why you're most proud of it.
Again, I think there's a whole list that you can point to, whether it's sports, arts, academics, but if I really narrow that down, it's, I'm really proud of the people that are involved in, in the district, whether it's from the top, from the central office, superintendents, assistant superintendents, all the way down to janitors, janitors and custodians, the students and the parents. If you look at that makeup, every single person has the same goal. We all want the best for our kids. And everyone's working together for the most part to make sure we accomplish that. So if, if you are asking, what you ask me, that's what I'm proud of. I'm proud of the, the community and the community involvement in the schools.
Thank you very much. Mr. Copeland, thank you so much for coming out this evening, we appreciate it. Do you have any specific questions for us, or do you need any further information?
We didn't mention the pay package.
I didn't ask.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thanks. So you're welcome to hang out, create your clear audio site.
Thanks.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thought sounded like an AA, even though it's.
This is Wally, and this is my seven hundredth time.
Thank you for joining us tonight. We each have, as it was last time, identical questions, you know. So first question, what prompted you to submit your application to become a member of the Board of Education? And is there anything in particular that interests you about this position?
Well, obviously, for those that know, I, I've gone through this before, I've run for office, I would, very much would like to join the board and help try to make a difference in town. Obviously, this is yet another opportunity to do so, so I thought I would throw my hat in the ring again. The second part of the question, I mean, I, I think there's, the, the board does a lot of great work, and I think there's a lot of work to do, and I'd like to be a part of it, and I'd like to, I think I can contribute something, given my various background. Right now, I'm. Right now, I'm a little concerned about busing safety. I live on Forest Road, and I'm sure folks have heard, there's vehicles that are not stopping for buses when the buses are picking up and discharging the children. And that's becoming an increasing concern, and I'd like to get involved in trying to find a solution for that, and I know that's not an easy thing to do.
What do you see as the duties and responsibilities of a Board of Education member?
Well, first and foremost, you oversee the single employee that you have, the superintendent. But I think setting the tone and focus of the direction of the school system. Obviously, there's contractual matters, both with the teachers' union and the teachers' contracts and related to the business matters, the everyday approvals, and we all see what's on the agenda, approving leaves and retirements and all that kind of stuff. So it seems very much a role where, you know, you're involved in overseeing the day-to-day operations to make sure that it's smooth. But as we've seen from time to time, there's issues that come up that require a lot of involvement with the community, answering, you know, questions, hearing concerns from parents about various issues, and trying to help work through those.
What personal or professional attributes would you bring to the Board of Education, and how do you see it enhancing our operation?
I like to think I'm mostly even-keeled and not too emotional about a lot of issues. So I think some of that for me could be helpful. Professionally, I have a PhD in computer science and taught at the College of New Jersey for 12 years, so my background, while not as a degree in education, I was an educator and kind of familiar with being in computer science, very passionate about STEM, STEAM technologies, girls in computing, girls in science. I think a lot of that I can bring to bear and be, you know, be a driving force in as well.
Is there anything in particular that you would like to accomplish while in service to the district?
I think right now, the issue I mentioned with the busing and the safety is probably number one. I'm very intrigued by what I saw about mounting cameras on the side of buses or possibly exploring dash cam recordings like they have in trucks and, you know, other vehicles to help work with the police to maybe utilize that, to try to cut down on people not stopping for buses and red lights and so forth. Obviously, there's, you know, there was recent issues of crossing down on 202 for some of the students that come on foot. I hate to say it, I just think there's a number of these issues that really concern me, and I feel like it's a ticking time bomb before something terrible happens. We have a lot of resources in this district. We have the backing of a great nonprofit organization that is very successful at raising money, and I'd love to work with them to try to see what we can bring to bear, especially the camera-mounted thing on the buses. I just think there's a possible solution there, and while we may not have the resources at the Board to fund that, this may be an opportunity for the MSF to get involved and helpfully move towards solving a problem. I think this is really very obvious.
Hi. Tell us a bit about your past or current involvement with any professional, community, school, and/or civic organizations. What roles have you taken within those organizations? And how do you feel your involvement has prepared you for service on the Board of Education?
So currently, I serve as a den leader in the Cub Scout PAC here in town. I have a son who is in the fourth grade. I've been his den leader for, I believe, four years, and I've got one more to go. So that extends to managing those events and overseeing and safety issues and whatnot. However, with my wife as the PAC committee chair, you can't help but get involved in other roles in the PAC. And currently, she and a few others, including myself, are spearheading an effort to do a fundraising event for a community service project for later this year. So right now, there's a lot of involvement there. I've also been a soccer coach, currently an assistant coach, soccer coach in the rec program. I'm an assistant coach for basketball in the rec program. How those relate to this job, I think, you know, again, there's a lot of interfacing with parents regarding students, you know, kids that are on your teams or in the PAC or whatever, acting as a liaison or go-between to solve problems. And again, I think those are useful skills to have when you're on the Board.
Mr. D. Bestwold, or Doctor, I should say.
Thank you.
Preemamorthi, how are you? Thanks for coming out tonight. At this time, do you see any limitations or conflicts of interest that you might have that would hamper your fulfilling your role on the Board?
I don't. I can't conceive of any.
That's the easy one. Secondly, I have two parts. Our meetings are held basically every two weeks, with meetings once a month during the summer. A trustee can be removed from the Board for missing three consecutive meetings. Members are not only required to devote time to public meetings, but their committee responsibilities as well. Will you have sufficient time to devote to this position?
I believe I will.
Thank you.
Please tell us something about Mawa High School, the Mawa School District that you're most proud of, why you're most proud of it.
I think, I think what I'm most proud of is the depth that the community is involved. When you look at the HSOs and their success and all the parents and, you know, volunteering their time, getting involved, doing activities, raising funds to have activities like the color run that I went to this year is a great example of that. How they liaison and work with the staff, the principals, the teachers, I think that's great. And then, of course, the MSF is, you know, just a much larger example of that, where you've got a fairly good-sized community of folks raising money to help support the work here and try to introduce new programs. I think when you step back and look at it, I think it's a really unique situation, and it makes me very proud to see the community sort of being involved at different levels. And that even extends to tonight's session. We have six candidates that want to fill one seat. I mean, you know, I think there's a lot of people in town that care, want to be involved one way or the other, and whether it's limited to what you can be involved with in the HSO or maybe take part in the MSF, or like you folks have done, step forward and get elected to a seat on the Board.
Good evening. Thank you so much for coming. Do you have any specific questions that you'd like to ask us, or do you require any further information?
No, I'm pretty knowledgeable, like having gone through this a little before. I'm pretty comfortable with what I'm getting into and what's asked.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome to hang out in the audience. I feel like I've got to go to the back.
It's a little warm in there.
Can we turn the AC on?
It's like that hot.
I think Scott still has the code to control that.
Is that what it is? He's doing it for remote.
Mr. Denise, thank you for joining us tonight. So each of us, as you're familiar with the process, we each have the same question that we're asking of each candidate. So I'm going to kick off with, first question is, what prompted you to submit your application to become a member of the Board of Education? And is there anything in particular that interests you about this position?
It's an easy question to answer, because I missed all of you guys. This is the place I'd rather be every other Wednesday. But seriously, you know, when I left here, I felt like I left with some unfinished business. I mean, we had started a very ambitious project in the Policy Committee, where we were reviewing all of the policies to see which ones needed to be updated.
Oh, yeah, we're still doing it.
That's ongoing. That's going to be ongoing for a long time, I think. And, you know, when I was at the Facilities and Finance Committee, I left before even the shovel even hit the ground out there. But I was involved in the beginning stages of that project, so I would like to see that project come to completion. With the Facilities Finance Committee, we did a lot of work on that project, you know, from the initial site to the design. I mean, that design went through a number of different designs before we finally got to the current one. So, you know, I'd just like to see things that I've started and follow through to completion.
What do you see as the duties and responsibilities of a Board of Education member?
Okay, we could start with what's not the duties of the Board of Ed, and that's to run the school. You know, running the school is the duties of the superintendent and the administration. I'll steal a line from Rick. It's not that the Board is responsible for running the school, we're just responsible for making sure that the school is run properly. And that's the general overall responsibility, but there are, you know, specific responsibilities of the Board, and that goes through the committees. Governance is a big part of what the Board of Ed does, and that's through the Policy Committee, ensuring that the district is well-funded through the Facilities and Finance Committee. Also, any type of maintenance or any type of construction, that gets vetted through the Facilities Committee before any type of work that gets done. Also, another big responsibility is community relations, where you want to have the town feel good about the school system and buy into the stuff that we're doing here. So that's a big part of it as well.
What personal or professional attributes would you bring to the Board of Education, and how do you see it enhancing our operation?
Well, I guess, you know, my prior experience on the Board. I was on the Board for three years. I sat on Facility Finance Committee for three years. I was on the Policy Committee, Community Relations, Technology. So I was on pretty much all the committees here. I was, the last year I was here, I was the second-place president, and I sat on the Executive Committee. So I have a pretty good understanding of the inner workings of the Board. So that would be something that I think would help the Board, having somebody that's already did that, because as we all know, there's a learning curve involved for new Board of Ed members. Having done it, I could pretty much bypass that whole learning curve. And also, I successfully completed the three-year mandatory training that's required by the Department of Education. So that's been taken care of as well.
Hi, John. Is there anything in particular that you would like to accomplish while in service to the district?
You know, that's a tricky question, because that kind of leads to, that maybe there's an agenda. So the way I see the Board working is that we don't have anything that we want to bring to the district. It's administration brings that to us, and then we vet it, and then we decide whether or not we want to go forward with that. So, you know, that's the way I would answer that question. It's not about what we want, it's about what administration wants, and then we could, you know, vet it through the committees and then have a dialogue with the entire Board.
Hi, John. Tell us a bit about your past or current involvement with any professional, community, school, and/or civic organizations. What roles have you taken within those organizations? And how do you feel your involvement has prepared you for service on the Board of Education?
For many years, I was involved with youth sports here in town. I coached baseball, I coached football, I coached basketball. My wife is very involved in the schools as in the HSOs. Again, I have to go back to my prior experience here on the Board, where I've done it for three years. And I had pretty much almost a perfect attendance record. I probably only missed about two or three meetings. So I was very, very involved. Whenever there was a workshop at the school boards, I would try to attend those, so I could get a better understanding of how the Boards work throughout the county and get a pretty good idea of, you know, how they do things and how we could do things better than we are, to like a comparison. So you get a pretty good idea just by attending those to see how other districts are run. Ours is probably better than most anyways, so.
Hi, John. How are you? At this time, do you see any limitations or conflicts of interest that might hamper you in fulfilling your responsibilities as a Board member?
No.
And secondly, you know, our meetings are held every two weeks, with meetings once a month in the summer. A trustee can be removed from the Board if they are absent for three consecutive meetings. As you know, members are required to devote time to public meetings, but also to volunteer on committees. Will you have sufficient time to devote to this position?
Yeah, I think I demonstrated that. You know, when I was here for the three years, I, like I said, I almost had a perfect attendance record. The only time I missed was a family vacation, so. And, you know, the committees, I understand how important those are. I always try to make it to those as well, so. It was never an issue in the past. I don't see it being an issue in the future.
Great. Thanks.
John, you've answered this question in bits and pieces throughout your entire interview, but I have to ask it anyway. Please tell us about the Mawa School District. Are you most, what you're most proud of with the district and why?
There's a lot of great things happening in this district. The STEAM building is going to be a tremendous asset to the students. But it's not just the building, it's going to be the program that we're going to put in that building. The Pathways Program, I think, is fabulous. When I was here, we just started, we were just getting started on technology, but we've made such big strides in that area. And I think, being that we were maybe a little late compared to some of the surrounding districts, I think that helped us, because we were able to see what their challenges were and what worked for them and what didn't. So that helped us when we did our technology initiative. So that, you know, we have the technology, we have the STEAM building, we have, I think our HIV program is one of the best. You can't go into any of our schools without, you know, seeing something on the walls about respect and being kind. And I think we have a whole week dedicated to just respect week and how to treat one another properly. So, you know, that's a big part of it, so. Because if you're being bullied and don't want to... So, you know, that's a big part of it, because if you're being bullied and don't want to come to school, you can't learn well. So I think that, you know, that's another program that we certainly are very proud of here. Thank you.
Thank you. John, thank you very much for coming this evening.
Thank you.
Just wanted to know if you have any other questions for us, or if you need any further information.
No, I think I'm good.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, John.
Good evening, I'm Trisha Dubois.
So each of us have, we're all asking the identical questions to each candidate, just in the interest of fairness. So the first question is, what prompted you to submit your application to become a Board Member or a member of the Board of Education? And is there anything in particular that interests you about this position?
So I have to say that I've always thought about it. I've been an educator for 30 years. I've had the pleasure of working with the Board of Education members of my own district, and they've been fabulous. So as you all know, I've been at the Board of Education meetings, every meeting this year so far. I had originally started coming because of the library issues. So I met with a group of parents, we came to the Board of Education, you listened to us, you heard what we had to say, you worked with the superintendent, the administrators, and they came back and came up with a program that we were quite pleased with. So that's how it's supposed to work. So I applied because I wished to be part of the solution, not part of the problem, and I wished to work with people who are willing to work with the parents. So I was quite pleased, thank you.
What do you see as the duties and responsibilities of a Board of Education member?
So the Board of Education, they are champions of public education. They're champions not only in Mawa, but you are champions in the state. The first role that the Board of Education does, from my experience, is that they employ the superintendent, they set goals every year for the superintendent, and they work with the superintendent to make sure that those goals are implemented. The second duty is that they are in charge of buildings and grounds, and they make sure, such as the STEAM building is being built, and they oversee the facilities, including, you know, the sports fields. Board of Education also creates and adopts the policies as well, and I did read some of those policies that you're reviewing, Mr. De Silva, and it is quite dry. I've been reading, I started reading. When I plan on sleeping, I look through the book and read them, so. So not only do they do the policies, but they also adopt curriculum as well as the budget. And the fourth thing that they do, and it's probably the hardest thing, is negotiating and adopting collective marketing units, you know, and contracts, so.
What personal or professional attributes would you bring to the Board of Education? And how do you see it enhancing our operation?
I've spent my entire, I guess, teenage and adult life volunteering. So I have always been one to step up, if not me, then who else? So I've worked with, I've fed the homeless, I've collected school supplies, these are all things that I do my own. I work in soup kitchens, I've worked in homes that, you know, for disabled adults, so I bring that whole special education piece. And that's what led me to become a school psychologist. So I've spent the last 30 years of my life, yeah, I know I look really young, right? So I started when I was 12. So I've spent the last 30 years dedicating myself to children. I've worked in kindergarten through eighth-grade capacity as a school psychologist. And what I think I could bring to the district, and I work in New York State, so I think I could bring balance. I think everybody's moving towards technology, we're all getting on that technology train, but I do believe that it needs to be balanced. I see kids that are struggling socially, I see children that are struggling emotionally. We have kids that are addicted, you know, wonderful kids that end up addicted to heroin. So what I could bring to the Board is balance and making sure that social-emotional peace is also addressed.
Is there anything in particular that you would like to accomplish while in service to the district?
I would like, I've been pleased with the social-emotional curriculum, but I think as it goes up, I think it becomes less. So if I had any influence in that, I think I would make sure that we ensure that our children are socially, emotionally prepared for life, not just academically and through technology. I think that we need to keep that emphasis. I'm one of those parents who, you know, my kids came home, they both came home with the Kindness Award last month, and I jumped for joy, because that to me is first. And my first question to my children's teacher is, are my children kind to other children? And are they good boys? And that's what I want to know, and I think that's key.
Tell us a bit about your past or current involvement with any professional, community, school, and/or civic organizations. What roles have you taken within those organizations? And how do you feel your involvement has prepared you for service on the Board of Education?
So the one thing, obviously I have young children now, and I'm not able to do all that I can do, but the one thing I did retain is through my church, I was on the Social Concerns Committee, and I was in charge of putting together teams of people to go down to the Bergen County, you know, we feed the homeless. So I think I've learned a tremendous amount about people by putting together teams of people to feed 150 people. And it's not, what's interesting is everybody, it's not the homeless people, it's not the drug-addicted, but there are children who walk in, and there are people who drive up. And I think everybody's so shocked to see someone in a car driving up to get food, but we have to remember that there's working poor, and we just don't know who in our community who's suffering. So I think, you know, parents are doing the best they can in the district to get there, and I think that, bringing that to the Board of Education makes a difference, because parents are trying their best. And professionally, I was given that fabulous task of DASSA Coordinator in New York State, that's the Dignity for All Students Act. So I'm in charge of investigating the bullying grades five through eight, and I'm sure that's, you understand how difficult that is in middle school. So I think I bring that perspective to the Board of Education, that whole component and that whole piece. I think I could be a good resource for that.
Ms. Dubois, Freeman Worthen, thank you for coming out tonight. So at this time, do you see any limitations or conflicts of interest that might hamper your fulfilling your responsibilities as a Board member?
I don't. I mean, I think I'm just like everybody else. We all have a lot on our plate, and we're all juggling, and you have to pick your priorities. I was a little nervous when I brought it up to my husband, I'm like, you know, what do you think? And he's like, go for it. So I don't think so. He's off on Wednesdays, too, so he's home. He's home right now making the boxcar derby cars that are due in a week and a half, so he's standing, and I've got Valentines to do when I get home, so.
And the second part, which you've already answered, our meetings are held every two weeks, there's responsibilities for public meetings and joining committees. A trustee can be removed if they're absent for more than three consecutive meetings. Do you have sufficient time to devote to this position? I think you've.
Absolutely, this is a priority.
Thank you.
Please tell us something about the Mawa School Districts that you're most proud of, and why are you proud of it?
You know, I think a lot of people will look at Boards and programs. My experience, and, I mean, my kids are in second grade, so I've only had three years of experience, but I'm most proud of the people who work here. I have had a positive experience coming here for the Board of Education. I have actually spoken on the phone with Dr. Shone, my children's teachers, it's been a positive experience. The aides, the monitors I see in the grocery store, I've met some of the people in the cafeteria, I've even had to go to the principal for one of my sons, and that was a very positive experience. He came home saying, Mom, I think Mrs. Utel is in love with me. So I think, I honestly believe that what's wonderful about Mawa is the staff that it employs. You can have the most beautiful facility with the best programs, and if you don't have good human beings who care about children, it doesn't really matter. So what I'm most proud of in Mawa is the staff, and I have to say, the community's been pretty awesome, too.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for coming this evening. I just wondered if you have any questions for us, or if you need any further information?
No, again, I want to thank you for all the work that you did with the library, too. We were quite pleased.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Excuse me. I did a great job.
I know.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it.
She's going to hand to you tomorrow with red.
Good evening, Mr. Langkast. Good evening.
Thank you for joining us tonight. In the interest of fairness, each of us has a question for you. They are the same questions that we've asked of all the other candidates. So the first one is, what prompted you to submit your application to become a member of the Board of Education? And is there anything in particular that interests you about this position?
Sure, yeah. So what prompted me was the vacancy. As I'm sure. In terms of my interest, I'm a product of Mawa Public Schools. I was, my K through 12 education experience has been through Mawa Public Schools, was a student-teacher at Mawa High School, and inspired me to become a teacher myself. So in terms of my interest, I know the school in terms of the perspective of the student, a teacher, as a community member, so that's why I'm interested.
What do you see as the duties and responsibilities of a Board of Education member?
I think generally, you know, passing regulations and policies, but I think the overarching thing is maintaining that the schools are run well. I don't think that, you know, it would be the Board's responsibility or my responsibility if I were to be on the Board to run the schools in any manner, that's the administration, teacher's role, but to make sure that the district is running well and well-maintained. I think that's the role of the Board.
What personal or professional attributes would you bring to the Board of Education? And how do you see it enhancing our operation?
So in terms of personal, I think, again, like, I was a student here, a student-teacher. I think you can speak to many of the faculty, that my personal attributes, I'm conscientious, thoughtful, direct. In terms of my professional attributes, though, I'm a teacher, currently a high school teacher, so in terms of my knowledge of pedagogy and curriculum and instruction, I do it every day. So I could bring that as well to the Board.
Is there anything in particular that you would like to accomplish while in service to the district?
I think other than dutifully exercising my role as a Board member if I were appointed, I think that would be what I want to accomplish. I don't think coming to the Board with a specific issue or a specific agenda would be helpful to the community or the Board, to be honest. I want to work with the Board to resolve issues. I don't think coming with a particular issue to accomplish or a particular goal with a specific agenda would be useful or helpful. Thank you.
Hi, John. Tell us a bit about your past or current involvement with any professional, community, school, and/or civic organizations. What roles have you taken within those organizations? And how do you feel your involvement has prepared you for service on the Board of Education?
So I think my role is, in my current role as a teacher and a teacher leader at my district, would best answer that question. I think what I've learned from that is how to work with others to get things done. So in my role, just to give you a specific example, I was very interested in Harkness, the Harkness Method, which is a method employed by Phillips Exeter in New Hampshire, one of the top private schools in the nation. And I worked with my administration to get me there for a week to learn how to use and implement Harkness education. And from there, I worked with my administration and my school to bring it there, and now a school goal at my district. And now I'm working with Mawa Fair State Universities, now Work for Education Renewal, to bring that, working with them to bring that elsewhere to other districts. So I think my role in terms of a teacher and leading professional developments, especially with that Harkness instruction, has taught me how to work with others to get things done practically, to get things done.
Can you tell us what that is?
Harkness instruction? Sure, yeah. It's basically a method of instruction in which it centers around student-centered conversations in the classroom. And there's a lot of different forms that take place, but it's very similar, we heard like Socratic method, Socratic circles, it's similar to that, a little bit different, more student-centered, but that's, if you have that, that's generally what it is.
Mr. Langkast, John Freeman Worthen, thanks for coming out tonight. At this time, do you see limitations or conflicts of interest that might hamper you in fulfilling your responsibilities as a Board member?
Yeah, well, as a teacher, I understand that. I'll have to recuse myself from some discussions and negotiations, I understand that. But I do want to make clear that the lack of participation that I can't have there, I will make up with my participation on other committees and discussions within the Board.
Great. My second part is, our meetings are held basically every two weeks with meetings once a month during the summer. A trustee can be removed from the Board if they are absent for more than three consecutive meetings. In addition to public meetings and attendance, there's also committee responsibilities. Will you have sufficient time to devote to this position?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Please tell us something about Mawa School Districts that you're most proud of, and why are you most proud of it?
I think a lot of people will look at Boards and programs. My experience, and, I mean, my kids are in second grade, so I've only had three years of experience, but I'm most proud of the people who work here. I have had a positive experience coming here for the Board of Education. I have actually spoken on the phone with Dr. Shone, my children's teachers, it's been a positive experience. The aides, the monitors I see in the grocery store, I've met some of the people in the cafeteria, I've even had to go to the principal for one of my sons, and that was a very positive experience. He came home saying, Mom, I think Mrs. Utel is in love with me. So I think, I honestly believe that what's wonderful about Mawa is the staff that it employs. You can have the most beautiful facility with the best programs, and if you don't have good human beings who care about children, it doesn't really matter. So what I'm most proud of in Mawa is the staff, and I have to say, the community's been pretty awesome, too.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for coming this evening. I just wondered if you have any questions for us as a Board, or if you have any other information?
Sure. I really like the question about being proud, and I imagine, you know, being on the Board is very valuable, and there's a lot of pride in that. I want to, if we do have the time, if we could go around, just, if you could tell me the proudest moment that you've had serving on the Board, or something that you're most proud of on the Board, I'd love that.
Well, I'll tell you right away. Every year, it's the kids that are promoted and the high school students graduating, handing them the diplomas. It just makes it all worthwhile. It really does.
Yeah, thank you. If anyone else has a proud moment, I would love to. Too long till this.
I do, and I'll jump in. Having graduates like you, who present themselves in a way which you did, makes absolutely Mawa proud. We did well.
Thank you so much.
We did well.
So that concludes our interview, so there was all six of our candidates, so what's going to happen now? I'm going to entertain a moment to go into closed session, moved by Mr. Dusmarzki, second by Mr. Wintorkowitz. So we're going to discuss the conversations that we've had here in closed session, and we will be back out after this.